Okay. Looks like we're good to go. Just want to make sure everybody has their electronic voting. And we've checked in with them and they're good to go. Still, good volume, everybody in the back and upstairs. Perfect, thank you. So I know the building, the renovation, the construction, the parking, and the high school students still being here, so I appreciate everybody's patience getting here. I know that the auditorium is a beautiful space, so I'm very glad we're in here. Our town clerk, Linda Sassy, has advised me that we do have a quorum. And a couple of people over the last week or two have asked how a quorum is determined. And so, quorum is determined in Eastham by 5% of the registered voters being at town meeting. So we've eclipsed that tonight. My name's Scott Carriett. I wanted to thank you for electing me as your moderator. I'm honored by the confidence you've placed in me. And I'll do my best to ensure that we have a lively, fun meeting where people feel they can participate, whether you're a citizen or first time here, so we welcome you. It's our annual tradition of a town meeting. Happy you've chosen to spend time with us today. Looking forward to getting through the warrant, and we'll work together on that. On behalf of the Select Board and our Town Administrator, I'd like to welcome you. As I said, my main goal today is to ensure a lively debate on the issues and the articles before us. From the bottom of my heart, I hope that we treat each and each other with dignity and respect. I do want to remind you that I saw coming in, the Search Committee is looking for citizens to join the over 20 boards that we have in this town. The Search Committee, their information could always be found on the town website, and I know anybody at Town Hall would be happy to direct you in a direction of a committee or a volunteer that would suit you and your needs. Much of the work is done by volunteers at this town, and I know I personally want to thank the people that are on these committees, whether it's zoning, planning, finance, school committee. It's a lot of work is done behind the scenes, and I know on a day like today, it looks fancy as there's boards up here and the finance committee's over there, but a lot of work is done behind the scenes, and I certainly know that I'm appreciative of my fellow citizens and the effort that you give. Few items for information. Probably should've done this 20 minutes ago, but you pass the restrooms on the way in, so if you do need to use the restroom, please take your clicker with you. So, before we go much further, I'd like to recognize our Police Chief, Adam Bohannon. And Adam's back there. And Adam, you'll certainly let us know if we need to know anything, okay? Very good. And I wanted to recognize our new Fire Chief, Lisa Albino. Chief, anything for today?
I just want to let everybody know that I do have some personnel here. If there's a medical emergency, we'll be able to see you. Just raise your hand. I can get our EMTs and paramedics over to you. I also want you to take note as to the exits. What is your closest exit? That may not be the exit or the entrance that you came in. So there are a number of exits. Just take a quick note if the alarms go off, or there is an emergency in the auditorium here, we want to exit, and my personnel will help you exit in a safe fashion. And let's have a great town meeting.
And I'm probably a little biased, but Lisa and I went to high school together. And so every time I do see her, I'm always reminded, as I know we all are, that she is the first woman Fire Chief in the Cape and the Islands. And I thought, since she's already standing up here, wouldn't it be great if she'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Flag is over here to the right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first order of business is the return of the warrant. The constable has attested that the warrant was posted as required, so the warrant has been properly served. Linda Sassy to my left is our town clerk. Do you have anything to add?
No.
Our town clerk is all good. As the case every year, there's always a resident of Eastham that passes away that catches our attention. And as I sit here tonight, I'm looking at this handy gavel that I was given when I was elected moderator, and I couldn't help but think of Dave Schrofer, who passed away last year. And Dave was a true gentleman, gave countless time and effort to this town. And I remember the last committee that I served on with Dave was actually the committee where we made a recommendation to hire our current Town Administrator. So I was thinking of Dave today, and Gloria, I'm not sure if she's here or not, but certainly is amiss, and he was certainly a good man. And let's see. Oh, the Town Administrator's just asked me, just for informational purposes, that over the next three to four weeks, there are going to be a number of informational sessions on Wastewater. There'll be one on May 7th. These will all be on the website, but I just... There'll be one on May 7th at 6:00 at the library. There'll be one on Saturday, May 10th, at 11:00, also at the library. There is one on May 21st at 11:30 at the Senior Center. And one on Monday, June 2nd at 5:30, and that's also at the library. So I'm sure everybody didn't write all those down, but just so you know that they are there, and those dates will be posted, and I'm sure more information will follow. One more item before we really get into the nuts and bolts of it is the Vice Chair of the NOSAT Regional School Committee wondered if she could say a couple of words.
So, my thanks to the moderator. My name is Maura Noonan-Carry, and I'm the Vice Chair of the NOSAT Regional School Committee. How great is it to be in this space tonight? So I'm only going to take a minute of your time this evening, as I simply want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to all of you. The residents of this town, including many of you in this room, voted not once, but twice to support this high school building project, and we really appreciate it. Along with our neighbors in Wellfleet, Orleans, and Brewster, you have helped to create a safe place and space for our community's young adults to continue to learn and grow, preparing to launch them into the next phase of their life journey. What a gift. Now, as you likely saw when you came into the meeting this evening, this project is very much still in progress, with plans to be completed later this year. I look forward to all of you being able to explore the whole campus at next year's town meeting. In the meantime, thank you again for providing this opportunity for our students and for
Thank you. Okay, let's get started. First thing I'd like to do is a few introductions. To my right, the Select Board, as Amy Ekman is the Chair, Jerry Saracel is the Vice Chair, Suzanne Bryant is the Clerk, Jamie Dimitri and Robert Brunz. The Finance Committee, Mary Shaw, Peter Wade co-chairs, Bob Brown, Clerk, Patty Anderson, Fred Guti, Kate Paradise, Ron Lavouille, Roy Maroli, and I don't believe Steve Konachuk is here. Is that correct? Okay, good. Our Town Administrator, Jackie Beebe. Our Assistant Town Administrator and Finance Director, Richard Benevenu. I told you about our town clerk, Linda Sassy. And not to be outdone, is our Legal Counsel, Michelle Randazzo of KP Law.
Just call me the Wizard of Oz.
Yes. I just...I'm still having trouble with this. I'm not sure if I'm going to hit this or fall on her, but we'll give it a shot. So this is a good time to thank Jackie and her staff, Linda, High School Facilities Department, Police and Fire, and the newly created CERT team, for all the employees and volunteers that put this event together. I assure you, it was relatively stressful, an incredible effort to ensure easy access. I'm grateful, and thank you. As a reminder, any amendment to a motion will need to be presented in writing to our town clerk, and Ms. Sassy has the forms. There are mics that we talked about. There is a mic up on the right balcony side up there, and there's a mic straight ahead at 11:30 in front of me. And any questions or comments should come through the moderator. If you are recognized, please give your name and address. Generally speaking, speakers are limited to three minutes. I will, if I feel it's necessary, I will...you know, those rules don't apply to the Select Board and the Finance Committee and Town Administrator. They're specifically answering a question or a comment to a comment that was made in the audience. So I'll just use my best judgment to make sure everybody gets a fair shake. But obviously, you know, we try to get to the point and stay on the article that we're on with your poignant comments. If someone does attempt to call a question, it's sort of the moderator's role to determine whether we've had enough debate, where I feel like people have had a chance to make a statement. And if we do, if I do feel that hasn't been met, then we do vote, and it's a 2/3 vote to approve the calling of the question. So, and again, I will, you know, do that the best I can, based on the length of the debate, whether I feel a balance has been reached. I mentioned before, if you have to leave the room, please take your clicker with you. And electronic voting, a quick refresher. Should have one of these. I will give you a heads-up when it's time to vote. Once you see the light on, green light, you'll have 30 seconds to vote. Town clerk keeps the time. It is a press 1 for yes, and a press 2 for no. To change your vote, just change again, or vote again. After 30 seconds, the light will go off. I've been asked by the good folks at the electronic voting table to remind you not to vote until the light comes on. It will jam the system, and that will cause some issues. All right, let's do a practice vote. All right. So I was going to use the proverbial, "Is it raining?", but it's already rained today, so that's not going to work. So we'll do, "Are you having fun?" And if you're having fun, that'll be a 1. And if you're not having fun yet, oh, you've got to work on that, and that'll be a 2. Okay. So the majority of people are having fun. We got 294 on the "fun", and 174, we still got "work". Okay. Our last item of business before we really dive into it is the availability of the non-registered voters to speak. So tonight's warrant is going to be divided into two sections. So the first section is going to be everything except Article Number 9, and so we'll touch base on that in a second. Article 9 is a citizen's petitioned article, and the petitioner is a non-registered voter. So we've taken that article out as a separate item, because clearly the petitioner is not a registered voter, so we're going to allow discussion from all voters for Article 9. I don't have any specific people that are non-registered voters in the section on the back that have come to me with specific questions that they want to speak about, or specific articles. We could do this one of two ways. We can take a vote now at the beginning, and see if anybody has an issue on 1 through the end of 8, if non-residents want to speak, or we can take it as it comes. Legal counsel says I have the leeway to kind of do it either way, so it would be my preference that we just take it as it comes and see where it takes us. But I'm happy to, if there's an objection to that approach, I'm happy to be a little bit more rigid. Legal counsel says she sees no real objections, so let's...I think this is in the best interest of our community to see where this takes us. Okay? So let's get started on Article 1. So the way we do this, if you this year knew this, is that you'll see the article, and I will read the line that's under the, you know, underlined in black. Then we will have a...generally, a Select Board member will make a motion, then I will ask for a second. They will read the motion, I'll ask for a second. Then, if the Select Board specifically would like to speak to that article, I will go to them. If not, we'll go to the audience, and we'll kind of just take it by there. All right? Okay. So, Article 1, Authorization and Spending Limits for Evolving Account.
I move to approve Article 1 as printed in the warrant.
Suzanne, anything specifically to say?
No, I think it's covered in the warrant.
Seeing nobody at a mic, we will put Article 1 to a vote. The light is off? The light is off, thank you. Okay, we have 450 in the affirmative and 20 in the negative, so Article 1 has passed. Moving to Article 2A, General Fund Operating Budget. Mr. Saracel.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $45,698,949 for the operating budget of the town for fiscal year 2026, as printed in the warrant, and to defray this amount, transfer the following amounts from the following funds. From the Ambulance Receipts Reserve Fund, $600,000. From the Ambulance Receipts Reserve Fund, $301,706 for Line 56 capital lease payments. That first one is the $600,000 is for Line 24 fire safety. Septic Loan Benefit Fund, $20,400 for Line 55 debt service. Government Media Access, $115,000 for Line 7 operations and finance and IT salaries. Waterway Improvement Fund, $2,500 for Line 28 DPW Natural Resources salaries. Community Preservation Fund Administration Reserve, $40,000 for Line 16, Community Development Department salaries for funding CPC administrative positions, for a total of transfers of $1,79,606.
Second?
Okay, this is the town operating budget, covering salaries, operations, schools, debt service, insurance. It is an increase of 2.74% over fiscal year 2025, and does not require any override of Proposition 2.5. We urge approval of this warrant article.
Thank you, Jerry. So, in the past, and we think this works quite well, if you'll see on the...as the budget is laid out in your warrant, there are a variety of sections. And so what I will do is I will go through and read each section, seeing nobody at a mic for a comment on the budget as a whole. I will go through, and if there are any people that want to approach the mic that have a question on a section, we'll make a comment, we'll put...I'll make a note that you're there, then I'll have you come back after I've read through all the sections. So Section Number 1 is elected in general. Sections 3 through 6, or Lines 3 through 6 is Town Administration. 7 through 13 is Operations and Finance. 14 through 15 is Town Clerk and Elections. 16 through 18 is Community Development and Inspection Services. 19 through 20 is Health and Environment. 21 through 27 is Public Safety. 28 through 35 is Public Works. 36 through 45 is Community Services. 46 through 50 is Unallocated Expenditures. 51 through 53 is Elementary School Direct Costs and School District Assessments. 54 through 57 is Principal and Interest Payments on Bonds, Leases, and Borrowing Okay. I don't see anyone at a mic, and I didn't hear any holds or anyone running to the mic. Okay. So Article 2A is passed, with 443 in the affirmative and 29 in the negative, which brings us to Article 2B, Water Enterprise Operating Budget.
I move that the town raise and appropriate from Water Enterprise Fund revenues, the amount of $800,000, and from the Water Fund retained earnings, $204,32, for a total appropriation of $1,432 for the Water Enterprise Fund operating budget for fiscal year 2026, as printed in the warrant.
Just a quick note on this. I mean, this is the amount of money it's going to take us to, really, our anticipated costs plus retained earnings, to get to a total anticipated salaries and every other expense involved with operating our new water system, drinking water system.
Everybody here, Bob? Okay. Bob, could you get a little bit closer to the mic?
Can you hear me? This is the operating budget for our water system, our drinking water system, the anticipated costs for the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Seeing nobody at a mic, we will move to put Article 2B to a vote. I'm biding my time before we vote on whether you're having fun again. Okay. Article 2B has passed, with 442 in the affirmative and 38 in the negative. Our next article is Article 3A, which is a five-year capital improvement plan.
The article is for 3A and 3B combined, is the motion, I think?
No.
Is that...
I think we're going to do them separately.
You want to do them separately? Okay, great. Okay. So then, 3A, Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. I move in accordance with the requirements of the Town of Eastham Home Rule Charter, Chapter 7 through 4, to accept the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2026 through 2031, as printed in the warrant, Article 3A.
All right. Seeing nobody at a mic on Article 3A, we'll put Article 3A to a vote. Okay. Article 3A is passed, with 437 in the affirmative and 39 in the negative. Brings us to Article 3B, Capital Budget.
Okay. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,400,000 for the purpose of acquiring the items and undertaking the improvements as printed in the warrant at Article 3B, and to defray this amount, transfer the following amounts from the following funds. Free cash, $1,950,000. Ambulance Receipt Reserve Fund, $40,000. PEG Access Cable Fund, $12,500, for a total transfers of $2,2,500.
Thank you, Jamie. Article 3B has passed, 442 in the affirmative and 33 in the negative, which will move us to Article 4A.
I move that the town raise, appropriate, and transfer $2,000,000...
I move that the town raise, appropriate, and transfer two million three hundred fifty thousand dollars for the purposes listed in Article four.
Second.
This, this article, it lists the neither, non-continual operating costs nor capital projects. It funds the reserve funds that we have, as well as beginning to fund the residential taxpayer assistance fund for which the state has given us authority to assist those residents in need in paying their taxes. We urge approval of this article.
Seeing no one at a mic, we will put Article four A to a vote. Article four A has passed, four hundred and thirty-eight in the affirmative and forty-four opposed, which brings us to Article four B, prudent investment rule.
I move to accept and approve Article four B as printed in the warrant. This, this is about giving the town the ability to manage endowment funds or trusts that have been provided to the town in the form of endowments, giving the town the ability to invest those funds using fiduciary financial principles, rather than what was called a legal list approach, which was a very limiting approach, really essentially to money markets and CDs.
Thank you. Seeing no one who wants to jump in on Article four B, we'll put Article four B to a vote. Article four B has passed with four hundred and forty-five in the affirmative and thirty-seven in the negative. We will move on to Article four C. Article four C is adopt wastewater enterprise fund.
I move to approve Articles four C as printed in the warrant.
Second.
This article is a requirement from the state before we can accept funding for wastewater
Seeing nobody for Article four C, we will put Article four C to a vote. Article four C has passed with four hundred and thirty-six in the affirmative and forty-seven in the negative. Article four D, acquisition of twenty-eight forty-five and twenty-eight twenty-five state highway for housing, wastewater, pump station, and stormwater remediation. Just as a clerical note, this will require a two-thirds majority.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars be appropriated for the purpose stated in the warrant, including, including any and for costs incidental and related thereto, and that the treasurer, with approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow the sum of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section, Section seven, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Second.
So, let me, let me get my notes here for, so this article, we're looking to take two properties, part of a condo association. We already own two of the units in this. They're two duplexes. We own two of the units, and we got those through a tax taking, through failure to pay taxes on this property. We have been able to make improvements on these properties because they are duplexes and we own only half of each unit and no controlling interest in the condominium. It's a large property, and our goal is to not just run these as two duplexes on this parcel. It's a large parcel of land, and we would at some point turn it over to a developer to develop the property for housing. The other purpose would be for stormwater runoff. The property on the east side of Route six is owned by the town, the state, and the federal governments, and because of that, we have encountered great difficulty in addressing the high volume of stormwater runoff that flows into Salt Pond. This property being directly across the highway is a perfect location for treating the stormwater. The third purpose is for wastewater pumping, and we're all going to be talking about wastewater a lot in the next month, and one of the things that we'll learn is that in areas where it's very low, you need pumping stations to elevate the wastewater. It won't all be gravity-fed into the treatment, and it's a key location for that pumping station. And if you've seen any of these pumping stations, they're actually quite small. There's just some pipes coming out of the ground and maybe a small shelter or building, but, but it's not, it wouldn't take up much of the property, and the stormwater remediation would all be underground.
Thank you, Amy.
Hi, my name's Ellen Sisinski, and I live on Locust Road, so this is very close to my house. My question is, if you turn this over to a developer for further housing, are you going to be putting more structures on there, and would you be subject to the same regulations as everybody else as far as number of bedrooms and the space of the units and the space of the piece of property? My concern is there's some kind of density that's going to come in right behind me.
Understood. I think our plan for that may increase the density, but the first step in that would be an RFP for a developer, probably a private developer, to see what can be done on that parcel, and we're not sure. Right now, it's four condo units, and they each have two, I think they each have two and a half baths and four bedrooms, so seven, there's fourteen bedrooms in that complex right now, so that's quite dense as it is. So, we just need to go from there. Yes, do we have to follow the same rules everybody else does? Yes.
Okay, thank you. And as far as whatever structure would be there, I mean, Amy just said it's not going to be something really unsightly. Okay.
No, if you look at Old Colony Way in Orleans, all the way down Old Colony Way before you get to the road that goes to the beach, on the right-hand side, there's a pump station. It looks like a shed with, a shed or maybe a CCRTA bus structure. They're very small. Most of the works are underwater and they're just, I mean, underground, and they're just pumping, so there is some electricity there, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Rowe, two Jackson Drive. What type of a wastewater plant are we talking about? Is it an RBC, SBR-type plant? How many, how many gallons per year?
Can we talk about wastewater on the twenty-third because I don't have the answer to those questions for you tonight?
Okay.
This is just the pumping station. It is not the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one else at a mic, we will put, okay, we will put Article four C to a vote. And again, it is a two-thirds, oh, I'm sorry, four D to a vote, two-thirds vote, please. in the negative, so it has eclipsed the two-thirds majority needed. We'll move on to Article four E, transfer of twenty-eight thirty-five and twenty-eight fifteen state highway.
I move to approve Article four E as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Mr. Moderator, basically, this is when we take a property from tax title, it goes into the control of the treasurer, and this would move it from the treasurer to the select board to be able to do an RFP for development, to be able to place wastewater, the wastewater pump station on it, or to do the stormwater drainage. It has to be transferred. These are the two that we already own through tax taking.
Thank you, Jackie. Seeing no one at a mic on Article four E, we will put Article four E to a vote, and again, this is a two-thirds majority article as well. Article four E has passed with four hundred and thirty-eight in the affirmative and forty-two in the negative, so it has eclipsed the two-thirds majority which is necessary. We are moving right along. Article five A, seasonal communities designation acceptance.
I move to adopt Article five A as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All right, so this is, I have a fair amount to say on this, so please bear with me. The seasonal communities designation, for once, we have a new Massachusetts law that is not a one-size-fits-all. This law is flexible and allows it to shape, allows us to shape it to fit our town. There's only two things we would be required to do in addition to this acceptance tonight, and one is adopt zoning bylaws to permit undersized lots to be used for the recreation of attainable year-round housing, and two, to adopt zoning bylaws to permit the construction of tiny houses, less than four hundred square feet, to be used as year-round housing, and both of those would be deed restricted as year-round housing. And we, the Town of Eastham, get to develop the bylaws and bring them to town meeting for approval, so nothing is mandated for us to do anything. It's our bylaws that we'd be voting on. The seasonal designation is not a regulation, it's a resource. It costs us nothing but gives us a competitive edge. Turning it down would send a message that we don't need help when in fact we do. Voting yes means investing in our future and helping to ensure that Eastham has the tools to work towards being a sustainable year-round community. There's a seasonal communities advisory council that exists, and we pretty much have a dream team of Cape Cod representation on this council. We have our state senator, Julian Seer, Headley Luddy, our state rep, Kevin Gallagher and Orlean Selectman, Alyssa Magnotta, the executive director of the Housing Assistance Corporation, Peter Lombardi, the Brewster Town manager, Christie Senatori, the executive director of the Cape Cod Commission, and Paul Nitzwicky, the CEO of the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce. The law contains many tools that we can, we can use without using the cumbersome home rule petitions. This designation opens the door to targeted grants, technical assistance, and priority funding access to funding streams designed specifically for communities with seasonal economies. The designation gives us the ability to establish a year-round housing trust specifically for those who make too much money to qualify for affordable housing, but too little to buy a home at market rate. It create, we can create year-round housing for artists. It allows the town to purchase deed restrictions for year-round housing, allows the town to develop housing with a preference for municipal workers, so that our public safety personnel, teachers, and other workers holding critical jobs have a place to live. I think we all can agree that even as far back as thirty years ago, Eastham was a thriving seasonal community, right? Well, in nineteen ninety-five, we had three hundred and fifty-four students in Eastham Elementary School, and now we have one hundred and seventy-seven, exactly half. So let's stop the departure of working families going forward, because right now, we have a housing crisis. This designation has been accepted in many towns, including Provincetown, Truro, Wellfleet on the Cape, and other towns are voting on it either tonight or after this. And this puts Eastham in a position to directly benefit from state-supported incentives for towns like ours. Please vote yes.
Thank you, Amy. Sir.
Francis Filipowski, fifteen Harvest Road. I read in this five A item that it gives the ability of tiny homes to be built by right, and I was concerned about that, because what is going to be the standard of this by right provision, if somebody sees that and says, oh, I can go do anything because I now have the right to build my tiny home? Then, in seven A, I saw that in the redevelopment section, they were deciding to preserve Eastham's community character. I thought, okay, maybe this will have something to do with the tiny homes. Maybe we're not going to have something outlandish going in because they have a tiny home by right. Then, getting to a later section, I saw that if you have a smaller lot, then the proposed alteration is not to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure or use. Now, that's a strange standard. I don't know how anybody could do anything with that. So my question is, how do you tie this all together? Because a standard that is just not going to be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood is not a standard that I think ought to be here in. is not a standard that I think ought to be here in Eastham.
All right, thank you, sir. Let's see if we can get you an answer to your original question. And then we'll circle back on the next article when we get to 7. Does anyone on the board have an answer to the specific question?
I can take a stab at it. So, we don't have a bylaw yet. It'll be next year on the warrant for the accepting of tiny homes. We get to pick where we put them, what density we'd want to see them. And the by-right just means that we would lay out all the provisions for developing tiny homes in that bylaw. And it would have to fit in with our current zoning also. Your point about fitting in with the neighborhood, that was really, so we didn't get huge homes with a lot of little cottages, or, you know, things like that, that were out of balance. So obviously, we're not going to put a huge tiny home village in the middle of a residential neighborhood. These would be probably little pocket areas where there would be a tiny home, maybe a little cluster of three or four. This wouldn't be a town-wide thing at by-right that anybody could build tiny houses on their property. Did I catch most of your points?
Well, yes, but we can come back to the other standard about substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Since we don't have the bylaw yet, you can't quantify what that is.
But it's there later on.
Yes.
Thank you.
So for clarification, Amy, if people wanted to get involved on something in the future around this article, that would be a zoning.
Absolutely.
There'll be a zoning task force that people can volunteer and go to meetings for?
Yes, we turn it over to the zoning task force to develop the bylaw for next town meeting.
Does anyone else have a?
Hi, Lisa Radke, 415 Meeting House Road. Just real quick, under the seasonal communities designation is where you are putting out with paperwork now, saying that year-round residents can get a tax break or an abatement on their taxes. How is that not putting our year-round residents at odds with our part-time residents who won't get it? And how are you going to keep up with our budget and not have to do a two-and-a-half proposition override every year if you're taking all this tax money we need right now, and you're giving it back to the year-rounders? That just, I mean, it just doesn't seem like the addition's going to work.
There is no tax money attached to this.
It was coming home that you guys, under the seasonal communities, you would give year-round taxpayers a tax abatement. Jackie's saying yes.
One at a time.
I can understand the question.
All right.
Perhaps what you're referring to is the seasonal communities designation provides additional flexibility in the residential tax exemption that the select board does get to vote. Currently, they have the authorization to vote a residential tax exemption of any amount up to 35%. And the seasonal communities designation expands that to 50%. But at the moment, we don't have a residential tax exemption. And if we do in the future, it does not take away any revenue, it's revenue-neutral. You're correct in saying that what it does do is it does reduce the tax burden of residents for their property tax and does increase the property tax burden of non-residents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else at a mic, we will put Article 5A to a vote. Okay, Article 5A has passed. 418 in the affirmative and 64 voting no. We will move to Article 6A, real estate tax transfer fee.
I move to adopt Article 6A as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So Amy mentioned home rule petition. So that's what this article is about. And I'm just going to explain so that folks know what that means. A home rule petition is a request from a town or city for a new type of tool from the state legislature. Basically, it's an ask. It says to our state legislature that we would like the ability to enact this program. By voting yes today, you are simply agreeing to send this message to the state in hopes that they will consider the policy and potentially adopt a version of it. So some clarification, the home rule petition wording says that we would endorse the imposition of a 3% real estate transfer fee upon the buyer for purchase of property over $1 million. So if a home sells for $1,100,000, the 3% tax would apply only to the $100,000. So it would be a $3,000 tax. The reason behind this endorsement is to target housing sales of over $1 million. We have been experiencing the sale of residential properties for well-above assessed value for the purpose of either investment or vacation homes. This increases the cost of housing. It drives our property taxes up. And it makes year-round living in Eastham more prohibitive. Enacting a housing transfer fee directly targets one of the sources of our housing crisis. It also would allow the town to create a funding stream that would financially support programs that can increase the amount of year-round rental housing, such as leased-to-locals. Additionally, we expand our ability to fund other programs that can assist residents in acquiring and maintaining housing, such as purchasing deed restrictions or assisting with the development of ADUs. We have brought this article to you today because the state has considered the housing transfer fee as written in our warrant in the past, but has yet to act on it. It is our hope that Eastham, along with other towns across the state, will send a strong message that we want more tools. We want more tools in the tool chest to create reliable, recurring funding sources to address our local housing needs. I will be voting yes on this article to join at least 19 other communities across the state requesting the ability to enact a housing transfer fee.
Thank you.
Again, Ellen Szysinski, 315 Locust Road. How does this impact a transfer within a family?
Transfer within families are exempt, so it does not apply.
Same thing with in and out of a trust, that kind of a thing, if it's a family trust?
Yes, yes.
Seeing no one else at a mic? Oh, wait, yes.
Hi. Yeah, Jim Bachman, 300 Sammaset.
A little louder.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jim Bachman, 300 Sammaset. We all know that inflation is very persistent. And over time, that $1 million will become worth less. My question is, why is there no indexing of that amount to account for inflation?
Anybody have a specific answer to that part of it?
Thanks, Jim. There is a provision within the proposed law that says the exemption and the fee amount may be amended by two-thirds vote of an annual or special town meeting. And I think that's how the select board and the other folks that have submitted this type of petition for legislation anticipate controlling the issue that you raised with inflation of prices.
I'd answer your question, sir. Okay. We've got to race to the mic.
I'm not sure if it's a question, I'm not sure.
If you could introduce yourself, Jim.
John Cassiola, 25, Captain Penniman Road. It sounds to me like this is just a substitute for a tax, just a general tax. But the money, from what I understand, is targeted for housing needs. Is that accurate?
There's a provision within the law, as it's proposed, that the funds collected have to go to the town's housing trust or its wastewater stabilization fund. So only two purposes, not general taxation.
So, why do you believe this is a better way to raise the money as opposed through general taxes of some sort and just target them for this housing need and water?
So towns are not allowed to raise taxes. We're not allowed to levy tax. The state gives us the ability to take in property tax. That's the only one we can legally take in. So we have to petition the state whenever we want to increase a fee or a tax. We have to petition the state for the ability to do that. And this is one way, the transfer taxes, you know, we have transfers in real estate. Let us have a percentage of that. It may be 1%, it's up to 3%. We can set the rate at 1% or 2% or 3%. So that's what we're asking the state to do, is to give us the power to collect this tax when real estate of a certain value transfers and take that money and put it towards housing programs or towards, as Rich said, the wastewater stabilization fund.
And what's the belief?
But town meeting would decide that at a future date. So this would come back before town meeting.
Yeah, just lastly, what's the thinking that this is better than raising the property tax, some small increment? Something like that.
So I think the answer is, if you raise a local property tax, everybody in this room, and residents and non-residents, will bear that burden. We'd require a proposition, two-and-a-half override to do that. This is funding that would be coming from people coming into the community, buying a luxury property.
He's a lot shorter than me. Good evening, I'm Terry Hendricks. I live at 45 Russell. And like a lot of us, we're living in homes that we never thought we'd live in a house worth that much. I always thought I'd live in a nicer house worth that much money. Anyway, I don't. So what I proposed to the gentleman's question before is tie the $1 million to the circuit breaker cutoff, which is currently 1.142 million. So there's an index there that you can reference. Something set by the state every year. And it's indexed, I mean, every year it goes up, you know, based on the real estate values of the Commonwealth. So there's an index potentially that you could tie this to that goes up every year. It's a reasonable, tied-to-values, something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Ellen Szysinski, 315 Locust Road. From personal experience, I know that other states have taxes like this. And if you go to sell a house that's right around that dollar amount, you, the seller, wind up basically losing that money sometimes when you negotiate. Because the person buying the house says, I'm not going over that $1 million mark. Take it or leave it, $1 million, because I don't want to pay that tax. And it does become detrimental to the homeowner who's going to sell their house when you're right around that number. I just want to point that out, that it is definitely something that happens quite often. So instead of being able to sell your house for $1,500,000, if that's really what it's worth, your house is only going to sell for $999,900, because nobody wants to pay that tax. And you're, in a way, putting the burden and, you know, the loss of revenue on the person who's the local, maybe, going to sell their house.
But the tax doesn't apply to the $1 million. It applies only, in your example, to $50,000 over. So that would be $1,500. So you could do that in negotiations. I don't see how that would push it below a $1 million sale for that. But that's what this is, this is what this is asking. And it's not certain that the state will do anything like this. The piece itself, what we're asking is exactly, basically, exactly what the state had in its budget that in last June just didn't quite make it through. So that's why we kept at that. I found a way?
Jerry, closer.
Oh, closer, I'm sorry.
I understand.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, I heard you. Thank you.
So just in case everyone heard Jerry, he's saying, and I'm just repeating what he said, is that it's 3% of the value over $1 million. The first $1 million is exempt, just for clarification. Okay, yes, sir.
Keith Burritt, 20 Lucinda Court. What is the projected taxation that that's going to generate? And what kind of property are you going to be able to quote-unquote "purchase" to be able to increase the housing for those people that need housing?
We're not.
Go ahead. I was going to say, that's a great question. I was going to ask you to answer it.
So we did, Rich did the numbers for us for 2024. So at a 1% fee with a $1 million exemption, we would raise $257,650. And that would be for this year. So that's on this year's sales. So we're not thinking of this money necessarily to purchase property with. But we are thinking about it in terms of trying to have a recurring revenue source, a revenue source that happens every year that we can count on to pay for programs that we need, like the leased-to-locals, which we're starting, we're piloting this year. And we're looking for a revenue stream to continue that, so we can continue that subsidy. So those are the, we have a myriad of housing programs. We do not have a recurring revenue source to fund them. So we have to use free cash, we have to, you know, ask the CPA. We have to do a lot of things to try and patch those figures together.
But what is the $250,000 going to purchase? And you say that if you can't use it in year one, then you're putting it in the bank for year two. So it's not working yearly for you.
For the first year of the leased-to-locals program, we need $300,000. And so we've appropriated $300,000. So that program alone could be sustained with this funding source. That's our point. We need that amount of money every year to do that program.
Hold one second. I just want to clarify one thing you said. Because the article says 3%, the reference you gave us from your chart was 1%.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
So 257 times 3 is, you know, 760 grand.
All right, so just, I'm just trying to stay focused. There's enough candy up here to sink like Halloween. So I'm just trying to stay focused and not eat the candy. So I just wanted to make sure everybody saw that, the number. That's okay.
Mr. Moderator, I just want to clarify also. Any programs and appropriations that would be funded out of this, if this funding source becomes available, clearly, it would become available in the middle of a fiscal year. We wouldn't have appropriated any programs to spend it on. But all those programs do come to town meeting and get approved by town meeting and go through our normal budget and finance committee and select board. And likely, in this case, the housing trust process for review.
Thank you, Rich. Seeing no one else with a comment, question, or near a mic, or running to a mic, we will put Article 6A, which was the real estate tax transfer fee, to a vote. Okay, Article 6A has passed with 267 in the affirmative and 76 in the negative. So. Articles 7A and 7B are zoning. Articles, so. So, I always like to try to get a person who's worked on this near a microphone in case people have specific questions.
Did the article pass?
Yeah, the article passed. Yep. Again, 267 in the affirmative, 76 in the negative. So, I know, is Mary Nee here?
Paul.
Oh, and Paul? Okay. So, we'll start with Article 7A, which is zoning Eastham Corridor Special District.
I move that Article 7A be approved as written in the warrant with the following changes. Under Section 3.8.5, Table of Land Uses in the Trade Park District, prohibit compact neighborhood, mixed-use building development, and multifamily dwelling as principal uses, and allow multifamily dwellings as an accessory use in the Trade Park District. And further, under Section 3.8.5.6.1, dimensional tables in the Trade Park District, remove the requirement for outdoor amenity spaces. Second.
Okay. This is a 2/3s majority article. Paul, do you want to make some general comments?
Thank you. Good evening. Our current zoning was adopted, and it predates many of the land use planning documents that we have in place now. Most notably, the zoning for the Northeastham Business District predates our strategic plan, predates our housing plan, our wastewater planning, and it predates the purchase of the Teatime Property and Town Center Plaza Property. And so, in many cases, the current zoning doesn't reflect the goals and the recommendations in those plans. So, the purpose of this article is really to align the zoning for the Northeastham Commercial Districts with the vision and the goals outlined in those planning documents. And really, the zoning we want to put in place is the framework on which future development of the Northeastham Village Center that we envision, that's the framework that's going to allow the creation of that vision to come forth. I'll just mention that the proposed zoning tries to maximize the potential for business and property owners in this district. It incentivizes the creation of affordable housing, year-round rentals, and it focuses on the built environment to make sure that any development that does occur is in keeping with the character of Eastham. So, we have a predictable planning process that has flexibility and some foresight to what we hope to see for development in the future.
Thank you, Paul. And we'll start with this gentleman.
Brian Early, 90 Sundown. I'm on the planning board, and I'm also a candidate for select board. I still stand in opposition to adopting 7, not because it's, because it is a really well-developed plan, but there are changes that are coming to everybody that aren't taken into consideration on this plan, no matter how well it's developed. So, having said that, I think that you can vote whichever way you feel, but realize that there will be something in the future that might do something that we might not want to do right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Kim Anstey, 130 Sparrow Hawk Lane. I just wanted a clarification. Is the special district those that picture on the left or every house that's in the box on the right?
Paul?
Yes, thank you. The map that you see is the entire ECSD district. So, the map on the right is just indicating a close-up view of the kind of core village center around Brackett Road, Route 6 intersection. But the whole, the whole area is the total district.
So, on the right is the whole area? Because those are homes on the street on the other side of the bike path, including Sparrow Hawk Lane.
No, the district encompasses everything west of the bike path.
So, the picture on the left?
So, the map on the left is a close-up of the box inset on the right. It's just to blow up a closer view of the district, that section of the district.
Did that answer your question, Ms.?
I just want clarification of what all that's gonna be. Is it gonna be housing, shops? I just don't under...
Paul, can you give Stacy a little information?
Sure. Be happy to. So, this ECSD district is broken up into several sub-districts. That's what the map is showing. So, all the different colors are sub-districts. And each sub-district has uses that are permitted and allowed. In general, and what the, what the goal of this amendment is, is to increase the ability to put housing in mixed use generally throughout the whole district. But what the zoning details, there's a lot of charts and language that really try to get specific on what's, what level of development, what level of density, what types of buildings are allowed in each district. So, it's kind of calibrated to each smaller neighborhood. But in general, what we're trying to do is foster more mixed use, a diversity of housing to address our affordable housing, our year-round workforce and seasonal workforce needs.
Okay. All right. So, how does it get paid for? And once it passes, do we have any say into how much is housing? How much is anything like that?
Well, the good news about this article is that it doesn't cost any money. This is zoning. It puts in place the land use regulations for the development that's to come. The majority of the property here is private property. So, depending on what happens, that's really gonna go through our regulatory process, through our planning board, our zoning board. That's how the decisions get made. What we're trying to lay out in the zoning is a clear process so that if someone wants to develop their property, they can go through our zoning and hopefully easily see what the goals of the community are. And I've explained this, I think the best analogy is it's, we're trying to create the zoning, so it's a cookbook. It's a recipe. We're laying out exactly what the town wants to see. So, if you come in, you follow the recipe, we'll know what you're gonna plan on building. We'll know that it'll be appropriate to the community, and hopefully, it's a, it's an easier regulatory process that yields the results that are appropriate for Eastham.
Okay. Thank you.
Paul, just for clarification, if a resident like Stacy wanted to get involved, or where would you recommend that they go? Is it zoning, to zoning meetings, or is it planning board meetings?
For this, the majority of decisions are we made at the planning board level.
Thank you.
Jennifer Alessi, 50, Aries Avenue. What I understand is in 2021, there was a survey of residents and what they wanted to see and what was just a teatime at that time. And it seemed that the majority wanted a recreational space and not housing and not commerce. I'm just seeing how that 2021 survey led to this excessive development, as I see it.
So, I guess I'll take that one. We don't think of this as excessive development. Teatime, the plan for teatime has remained the same. We're just trying to get the district in the shape that we need it to be in so that a private property owner, for instance, that owns a store, could actually put housing over their store, and that would be allowed. Right now, it's not allowed. We're not talking about extreme density, but we are talking about trying to adjust our zoning so that we don't have sprawl. So, where we want the density is in the central district, right? We want it there. And we don't want it all throughout the town. And that's basically, for a long, long time, we haven't had the form-based code. We haven't been able to say, "We'd like it to look like this, not just be so high or so wide or so many square feet." So, the zoning task force has been working on this for two years, and it does fit with that original plan for teatime and for Town Center Plaza. It just connects it more naturally so that the private owners in that area can partner with us to start to make this something, right? So that we don't have to pay to make it something. The private owners will partner with us to say, you know, "I want to be able to increase my density, but I don't want to give up my store," or "I would like to be able to add A." And so, the zoning goes through what can be added, what can't be added, and what it needs to look like to fit into the new district.
I just still don't understand the disconnect between the survey and what's proposed here, as I see it.
Well, I just want to clarify that, other than teatime and Town Center Plaza, I believe all the parcels in this district are privately owned. So, this isn't the town developing anything. This is what private owners can do with their property in expanding their opportunity, period. That's all it is. It's not anything that town has plans for. If there's a specific plan for Town Center Plaza, for teatime, there will be a specific plan that comes before town meeting. This is what private property owners can do with their properties.
Thank you, Jen.
So, right now, if we wanted to do what we proposed for teatime, have a mixed use with a community center and some housing and maybe some retail upfront, we couldn't do that with our current zoning. So, we need these zoning changes to be able to do that plan and to be able to do other plans.
Hopefully, everybody's question got answered. I see nobody else at a mic, so we will put Article 7A to a vote, and it is a 2/3s majority vote required. Article 7A has passed with more than a 2/3s majority, 415 in the affirmative and 56 in the negative. So, we'll move on to Article 7B, accessory dwelling unit or ADU by law.
I move to adopt Article 7B as printed in the warrant.
Well, Paul, do you have anything specific in broad strokes that you want to add to this before we let this gentleman have his turn?
Yes, thank you. So, basically, what we're trying to do with this article is make sure that our local ADU by law is in alignment with what the changes have been made at the state level concerning ADUs. In many cases, our local bylaw that's already been in place was ahead of its time, ahead of the state. So, the majority of the bylaws in place, but there's a few housekeeping things that we need to adjust, which is the most, the biggest piece is really to allow ADUs by right in all of the residential zoning districts. And so, really, it's just to make sure we're in alignment with the state, changes at the state level.
Thank you, Paul. Yes, sir.
I'm still Francis Filipowski at 15 Harvest Road. I'd like everyone here who has a warrant to turn to page 39, Item 12. The concept for all of this I really like. However, there's an article here, this Item 12, that talks about a substandard type lot or something that you can still do. However, if you have an eyesore in your community and someone wants to put an auxiliary house, a tiny house on that property, look at what the standard is. It shall make a finding that the proposed alteration of the structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure or use. What are we doing? What can we allow? That's a standard that nobody would want to have next to them. So, it's not more detrimental than the structure there. Can anybody answer that? Would you accept something like that in your neighborhood?
Paul, right behind you is going to address your question.
So, the term you referenced substantially more, not substantially more detrimental, comes out of the state regulation, Chapter 40A. But what the, the real heart of this is actually not in this section, it's in our current zoning by law. So, we actually have, what this section says is if your, if your house is pre-existing non-conforming, meaning it doesn't adhere to the current zoning law, and you want to add an ADU, you actually don't necessarily get to add that ADU by right. You actually have to go through a regulatory process. You have to go to the zoning board or the planning board. And in the current zoning by law, we actually have very rigorous criteria for what constitutes substantially more detrimental. There's criteria that relates to the lot, to the size of the house, to the environmental issues. There's a whole list of very specific criteria that the planning board goes through in order to make that decision as to whether or not the project is substantially more detrimental. Does that answer your question?
Coming back.
Then why leave the language in there? I see a lot of items here that have been crossed out.
I'm happy to answer that.
Yes, please do.
The language that's proposed to be struck, again, is the language where our local bylaw is not in alignment with what the state regulations are. So, we can't, the state is basically saying that we have to allow ADUs by right, except where you may have a nonconformity. Usually, and I'll try not to get into the weeds, but the usual remedy for that is you go to the zoning board or the planning board and you get a special permit. You get that permission, that process I just explained. The state wants these ADUs to be available by right. The workaround is that we send those non-conforming properties to the zoning and planning board. They still need approval, but technically, it's not a special permit. It's still a review, a rigorous review, but we can't technically say that it's a special permit. So, it's a bit of a lower threshold than you would normally have, but it's still a guardrail where some regulatory oversight can be put on certain cases where there's a nonconformity.
Thank you, Paul.
Rich Brice at 1,005 Governor Prince. I read over the article. It's pretty good, but it does...
I read over the article, it's pretty good, but it doesn't say anything about Title V. I'm just curious, if you have a property that has two bedrooms, your septic is for, Title V meets that, how does that affect an ADU?
Great question. Paul, can you answer that?
Yep. The ADU, the use is allowed by right, but you still have to meet all of the Title V septic regulations.
You would have to upgrade.
Absolutely.
It's not a cheap venture. Thank you.
When I was reading this, um...
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Name and address.
Ellen, I'm still Ellen Sisinski, 315 Locust Road.
You're going to win a participation award if you're not careful.
This talks primarily about renting these units. Are you going to be able to build a unit like this for mom and dad in the backyard or your child? And can it remain empty for part of the year? You know, hypothetically, your parents live in Florida six months, they want to come here for six months. So you're not going to be allowed to use this ADU to house your own family for part of the year without a rental?
Paul, do you want to answer that?
While he's walking to the mic, I can chime in. It is really to create a year-round housing unit. That's the purpose. Now, it can be rented to a family member for a dollar. It doesn't have to be, you know, a market rate, doesn't have to be anything like that. So it can be a family member, but the idea is for year-round housing.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Ms.?
One last question. If the sewer systems come into town, and you're currently, like the gentleman up there said, in a house that is maximum, say, three bedrooms, and then sewers come in, could you then perhaps, would the town start to consider allowing more bedrooms on a property to allow more of these ADUs for full-time rental? Is that something the town is thinking about when they talk about the sewer system?
No, not building out any extra capacity in the residential areas. That would require future zoning changes, and I don't even know if the state would allow us to do it. Yeah, it would require DEP approval.
Thank you. Seeing no one else at a mic, we will put Article 7B to a vote, and it's majority vote, and you'll have 30 seconds to vote. Okay. Article 7B passes with 408 in the affirmative and 49 in the negative, which will move us to the Community Preservation Act article. So you'll, in your warrant, there'll be article, starting with Article 8, and they go through Article 8H, I believe. I'm sorry, 8G. Oh, no, 8H, sorry about that. So we will start with Article 8, which is Community Preservation Committee Recommended Appropriations, Reservations and Projects.
Do you want a motion on that?
Okay. Want to go right to 8A? Okay.
Going to 8A then.
All right, we'll go to 8A.
I move to adopt Article 8A as printed in the warrant, and if you look there, there's...
Second.
That's okay, thanks. Third. So this is about the dollars allocated across the historic preservation and also open space and also community housing. Active Recreation, I believe, was in Eastham ad, but essentially, 10% on the open space of this 1.266 million, 10% on the historic preservation, 30% on the community housing, and 10% on active recreation. So this is essentially, the money, the numbers behind this, 1,266, how much do we expect to come in from a 3% allocation of our property taxes? Plus, the state matches an amount, it's probably, I think, 10%, Mary? So those numbers represent 10% for this year, plus inclusive in these numbers that you see here on the warrant.
Anybody like speak to Article 8A? Okay. Seeing none, we'll put Article 8A to a vote. 30 seconds to vote, and the light is on. Okay. Article 8A has passed, 402 in the affirmative and 42 in the negative. 22, sorry about that. So 402 in the affirmative, 22 in the negative. Okay. Brings us to Article 8B, and I will just tell you what you see in your warrant is different than the motion, just so you keep an eye on that. Article 8B is 580 Massasoit Road dash Community Housing.
I move to appropriate $380,000 from Community Preservation Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance to provide for the renovation of the historic property at 580 Massasoit Road and the creation of one housing unit on the second floor.
Second.
So, like Scott pointed out, you'll notice that this is definitely, it's half of what was listed in the warrant. On Wednesday, we learned that in order to renovate the third floor with dormers, new roof, et cetera, the added weight forced the architect to add a structural addition. The building would need to be lifted, basement removed, and a new slab with piers or new basement altogether, which would add significant cost to the project. So that is why the motion has been changed to request only $380,000 for the historic building renovation and renovation of one housing unit on the second floor.
I'm still Francis Filipowski, 15 Harvest Road. But I wonder if anyone could answer two questions for me. One is, what was the amount of the purchase price in 2022 and the amount of CPA funds from 2024?
So you, just so I get the correct answer, you want to know the purchase price for when the town bought the property?
Yes.
And you want to know what was allocated in the 2024 budget or a year ago for CPA funds?
Yes.
Okay.
I was going to give approximations, but if somebody could give me the exact...
So the purchase price was $450,000, and we asked last year for, or the year before that, for $740,000 in CPA funds for the exterior renovation. In order to, in order to keep the thrift shop for the retail use and add housing, we have to add fire suppression, redo the electrical, you know, totally upgrade it.
Okay. All right. Then, if my math is correct, 11, excuse me, $1,190,000 has already gone in to this building. $450,000 and $740,000.
That's correct.
And now, there's going to be an additional $380,000 to now make this a total of $1.5 million for getting one unit of housing. I think everybody would think this again, because this is an awful lot of money for what you're trying to do.
It is an awful lot of money, and no one is contesting that. The reason we bought the property wasn't to create housing, it was to save historic structure. That's why we came to town meeting with the purchase price, and to save the function of that historical use of the longest store in a historic building. So that was why we purchased the building, and now we're trying to figure out how to get it its highest and best use. And right now, we need to preserve the outside of it, or it will just rot, and we need to try and get that second floor unit, a legal unit of housing.
Still seems like an awful lot of money.
So for 380, $380,000, that's what we're trying to do for that unit of housing.
Did that answer your question, sir?
And that's an awful lot of money.
Anybody? Yes, sir.
Hey, Rick Knight, 6 White Pines Drive. I'm happy that it's cut in half, certainly, because I was going to talk about $1,950,000 in that building. Back when we bought this building, the second floor was occupied as housing. At the time, I was on the Finance Committee and I supported the purchase of the, of the building to preserve the oldest building in town and also to preserve the thrift store. And I was on the Finance Committee last year when the restoration project came up. I did not support that. My inspection of the building, and I'm not a builder, I didn't see the aluminum siding rotting. So, I guess, I guess the issue with, with the housing that previously was occupied is that if the town owns it, I guess we have a different set of regulations we have to follow. Is that, is that the issue, why we need this kind of money added?
The second-floor apartment is an illegal apartment. It has no fire suppression, so, yeah, we cannot use it.
So it was illegally, yep, I understand.
It was, it was illegally occupied.
I understand.
And the siding is actually ripped on all four sides. So there is, the elements are getting into the building. And of course, aluminum siding is not historic either.
Right. I'm not, again, the reason I opposed it last year was, it's not a great place to have a historic building, but it's certainly a building that should be, should be restored. You know, the question I have is, is certainly at the original price that was being asked for, it seemed to me that there were much better uses of that money, saving it, I think we should be building up our reserves for Teatime and for the town center for housing and recreation as high as we can. And certainly, with the seasonal communities designation, we're going to have more leverage for our dollars to go against housing than, than we used to have. So, that's my input.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Ryan Early, 90 Sundown. I think it's a real diamond to own that building, but I would like to see the upgrades, except on a more reasonable financial footing. And I know you don't know the, the direction some things take sometimes, but Pruden says that that really is a diamond that I want, I would like to see it improved.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Nancy Truitt Blosser. I live at 25 Viola Road, and I'd like to see us do both. We can do the Teatime and keep it and make it look like Eastham, but with this building that we're talking about, that is Eastham. I could tell you a lot of stories, I won't take your time, but my mom used to tell me stories about going into that store. So, thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you.
We just wanted to clarify that, you know, like you did in Article 8A, you appropriate a minimum amount, which is required by law for each of the CPA purposes, which includes historic resources. You can only use historic resource money for historical purposes, and this is such a project. And then, just as, you know, everybody understands that it is expensive to maintain and renovate these buildings, and we're trying to make the best use of it that we can. And for frame of reference, the development of housing units recently has skyrocketed past $650,000 per unit. So for $380,000, we think it's a good return on investment. We don't often buy individual units, and so this would be an exception to that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Polly Foley, 3172 State Highway. It is a lot of money, I am for it. The town gets rent from renting it for the thrift shop, and the Council on Aging gets money from what gets sold there. So let's not forget that.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else at a mic, we will put Article 8B to a vote. Article 8B has passed with 365 in the affirmative and 68 in the negative, which brings us to Article 8C, the Cape Housing Institute.
I move to adopt Article 8C as printed in the warrant.
Second.
This article provides $10,000 to continue to help fund the Cape Housing Institute, which provides valuable information and training to, to us and individuals in Eastham to help create more year-round housing. We urge approval of this article.
Thank you, Jerry. Seeing nobody at a mic or no one running towards a mic, we will put Article 8C to a vote. Article 8C has passed, 358 in the affirmative and 50 in the negative. We'll move on to Article 8D, Eastham Elementary School Playground Upgrades.
I move to adopt Article 8D as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Okay. This article provides funds to improve the playground at Eastham Elementary School, and sadly, as costs go up, this is not an inexpensive task, but it's for use for our children and children who visit. We want an inviting and safe playground and play area for our kids. We urge approval of this article.
Seeing nobody at a mic on Article 8D... Seeing nobody at a mic on Article 8D, and no one running towards the mic, we will Article 8D has passed, 388 in the affirmative, 26 voting no, which will move on to Article 8E, Wiley Park Trailhead Kiosk.
I move to adopt Article 8E as printed in the warrant.
Seeing nobody, we have a mic. Yes, sir.
Keith Burrit, 20 Lucinda Court. Maybe pinching pennies with all the money that we've just spent, but $11,000 for two kiosks? I mean, what is it going to have? I mean, $11,000 for a couple of signs. Really?
And I'm also a, I'm the Chair of the Open Space Committee. The two kiosks are going to look like the ones that the, you'll see in Orleans. It's a two vertical posts with the bulletin board with protection in front and a small roof. They're really attractive. And they're at the Putnam Farms, which is right down by the courthouse, if you're interested in seeing them. And yes, prices are high when you go out and get bids. The 11,000 is, we hope it will be a little less than that. We have to, if we can get DPW to help with the setting it up, we won't have to pay for professional installation. We looked into putting them up volunteer-wise, but then we thought about liability issues. So that's why this is that much. Depending on which of the bids we choose, they came in a little lower. This was giving us a little buffer. And I agree with you, things are always more expensive than we think they are when we have a good idea. I hope you will support it. It's something we need for communication with the community, and there will be ways that we can educate people on their entering a very special beloved apostle of Eastham. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, look who's heading to a mic.
Hi, I'm Cindy Nicholson, 1005 Nossett Road. I am, am I talking okay? I support this. It might seem like a lot of money for those that do go to Wiley Park, which I do every single day. In the summertime, visitors need to know what is right and what is wrong. And carrying kayaks and dragging canoes and bicycles and electric bikes running through the park is a hazard. So I do appreciate the Open Space Committee working on this. They've been working on this for a while, and unfortunately, it's come to this, to come to town meeting to get a couple of signs up. And yes, $11,000 is a lot of money, but you look at what we've already spent tonight. So I hope that, yes, you go for this sign. Kiosk. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Just in case you didn't know, Cindy was the town clerk when I first was elected moderator, and she was very good to me. She helped me through these events, told me what to do. She was a very, very organized young lady.
Hi, Karen Strauss, 15 Grape Pond Road. I am Chair of the Conservation Commission and Member of the Open Space Committee. These kiosks are important to help us educate the community in the use of this conservation area. As you know, we've had some conflicts over the years between users, and it's important for us to make clear when people are entering the area what is expected of them, but also, sorry, walking up there is a little hard for me, but also, it's important that we provide educational opportunities so people entering these spaces can get more out of it, so they understand about the wildlife and the plants and the very special nature of these conservation areas. I urge you to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, Jeff Havelik, Chalkberry Drive. I'm all in favor of something like this, but how about anybody check with a tech school? These kids down here love building stuff. They take care of a lot of things. They've done a lot of favors for the veterans. They've got the whole facility to build things like this, and you might get a real good price.
It's Frances Lewis, 450 Queen Anne Drive. Yes, that was a very good idea, and it was suggested to me when we presented the proposal to the CPA Committee. So I reached out to the tech school, and the reply I got was, for this year, it wouldn't, the scheduling wouldn't work. So I wasn't able to follow up that lead, which was a good idea. I totally agree.
Thank you for that information. Okay, Article 8E has passed, 323 in the affirmative and 84 voting no, which moves us to Article 8F, Historic Property Surveys.
I move to adopt Article 8F as printed in the warrant.
Second?
And this is to allocate monies to actually conduct a survey which would identify all the significant historic buildings and such in town.
Seeing no one approaching or at a mic, we can put Article 8F, Historic Property Okay, Article 8F, as in Frank, has passed, 307 the affirmative, 96 voting negative. Brings us to Article 8G, Open Space Land Purchase 20 Deconpane.
I move to adopt Article 8G as printed in the warrant.
Second? Who's on the screens?
They're working on it. They may be unknown.
Sorry about that, I can't see the screen, so I didn't know that was a problem.
They're working on it. I'm not sure they have identified why it hasn't changed. I believe the slide was going to have the map that's printed on page 47 in your warrant.
While we work on our IT issues, does anybody have a question about 8G? Okay.
Good evening, Bill Munger, 215 Wood, Wonderstrand Way. I'd like to make a motion to just proceed with the, with your presentation. Do we really need the PowerPoint? Everybody has the warrant in front of them, so, in the order of saving time.
I have no problem with that. Anybody, seeing no further questions, everyone identified where Deconpane Road is, so I Okay, Article 8G has passed, 326 voting yes and 34 voting no. Okay, Article 8H, Forward Friends or Relatives with Autism and Related Disabilities.
I move to adopt Article H, 8, 8H as printed in the warrant. It's on page 48.
I second it.
I don't have a whole lot of comments on this, other than I would say that the Eastham CPA Committee and Eastham residents are fond of supporting regional housing efforts, and this one is specific to those who need, who have special needs. Oh, yeah, autism and related disabilities, and so I hope that we continue to support this effort.
Okay. I do see some people standing, but I'm guessing maybe 8H isn't why you're there. Okay. So anybody for 8H? Seeing none, we will put 8H to a vote, with 30 seconds to vote. Okay, Article 8H has passed, 369 in the affirmative, 29 in the negative, which brings us to Article 9A, Independent Tax Strategy Audit and Assessment. And just to kind of put the ground rules of how we're going to do this. So there is a article that has been petitioned, and we have a resident taxpayer who's going to make the motion and read the article. Then there's a second registered voter who will make the second. Then we will give the presenter three or so minutes to make their case. Then I will come up to the Select Board, in addition to what they've put in the packet, one of the Select Board members would like to make a comment or two, and then we will flip and flop through the audience for a bit, and we'll see where we're at. So without further ado, I will give Ms. Joan Lockhart the mic.
Hi, I'm Joan Lockhart. I live at 120 Steel Road, and I move to request the Select Board direct the town administration to engage a third party to conduct a comprehensive review and develop a three-year, forward-looking, comprehensive understanding of the cumulative effect of past and future decisions for effective long-term financial planning by property owners. Two, conduct an evaluation of all existing and planned tax relief programs to assess effectiveness, fit, and alignment with community needs. And three, to present the findings, recommendations, and a detailed execution plan from this independent study to the residents of Eastham at a town meeting before taking any further action regarding the town's tax structure for fiscal 2026 or beyond.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Barbara Reed, 16 Galesway. I second the motion.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, Wendy Gamba, 5 Bayview Avenue in Eastham and New Haven, Connecticut. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this citizen's petitioned article. There are a lot of pages in the warrant dedicated to this, so I will keep my remarks brief and to the point. This article is about the need for forward-looking predictability for taxpayers on our tax bills. This article is not about criticizing the annual budget process. This request is for an analysis of the costs that will likely be incurred by the town over the next three years and a translation of what that means to our future tax bills. This article is about ensuring that the Select Board and Committees are designing and implementing taxpayer assistance programs that meet the needs of the people struggling to pay their taxes. This article is not about withdrawing or eliminating support for anyone who needs it. This article is seeking additional input on tax strategies and relief programs. Why not get additional perspectives on something so significant? This article is not criticizing the town administration. It looks to enhance the efforts by coming at the data from a different perspective. The article and the response in the warrant clearly demonstrate that the current perspective is misaligned. Let's look at this from the bottom up instead of from the top down. When we talk about taxes, generally it's from the municipality's perspective, about raising revenue, keeping services funded, tax rates, assessment methods, and all the math that goes into the calculation. This is about taxpayers having an understanding of what to expect when the bill hits the mailbox. This vote is non-binding. It is symbolic. The vote sends a message to the Select Board that each of us, that more needs to be done to ensure the financial well-being of the taxpayers, all of us. If this article passes, the town is not required to take any action at all. If the vote were favorable, how the Select Board chooses to respond to the taxpayers is totally up to them. They could choose not to respond at all. A vote in favor of this article is not a decision to spend money, but it does let the Select Board know that the taxpayers are concerned. Let's put the ask to our elected leaders and vote yes on Article 9A. I would like to point out that the ideas in this article are not new concepts. Our consortium did not break any new ground here. There are pieces of this request did not break any new ground here, there are pieces of this request already embedded in many current efforts. On the strategy aspect of this article, I'm just going to offer a couple examples of what we're pointing to. In today's warrant article, four D, the voters, um, voted to borrow eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, this is one of the, one of the examples of a vote that has multi-year and time-delayed implications, that today's vote will not show up on your next tax bill. Here's another example of what we're calling tax strategy, it's the town's general practice to consider a general proposition two-and-a-half override request every three years, we should anticipate that override request will come in twenty-twenty-seven. Wastewater, this is an example of where today's governmental environment requires fast action, I would envision the need for quick turnaround on decisions continuing to happen. In the last estimate from about two weeks ago, the tax increase would be around eight hundred dollars for the median valued home. The point is that we need to add these things up over the upcoming years. There are things that are gonna come off the tally as well, we typically look at the cost of decisions in their respective silos, just as I have described them, we need to look at all aspects holistically and from the taxpayers' perspective. Tax relief programs, I think it's widely accepted that there are people here who need help managing the escalating bills, this article fully supports tax relief efforts for those in need, and call, and this article calls for the examination of our current state, for instance, the family support program, it was created in twenty-twenty, funded by an override, and it's annually funded for about a half a million dollars a year. In the information from the town printed in the warrant, it states that the program spending has totaled one point four million dollars, and quote, "Additional available funds are reserved for future program expenses." Five years of funding is two point four million dollars, that leaves a million dollars unspent, forty-two percent of the funds, or two years of funding, why is that? What could, what could be done to make sure the rest of these resources reach the community? One more example, a request for donation to the tax agent, tax agent aid committee was included in the tax bills that were recently mailed, the avail, the available information on the town website doesn't provide a lot of detail, there's a lot of discussion in the minutes about how to distribute the money, but no information about how the money was distributed, or how much money is currently on hand, could it do more? Is the program meeting the needs of the demographic it's targeting, how many people were helped, how many people were unable to be helped, and why? A study done by the Donahue Institute in two, in twenty-twenty-three for the COA asked these same questions. All this to say, there are a lot of things in play, we acknowledge the complexity, we ask that there be intentional coordination around escalating tax costs and the tax relief programming. Our tax bills have doubled in the last ten years, if you don't know how long it's gonna be until your tax bill doubles again, vote yes. If you think there's room for improvement in the select board's approach to taxing and tax relief, tax relief programs, vote yes. If you think another set of eyes with no political agenda could be useful to either validate the current approach, or provide additional perspective, vote yes. In this time of turbulent state and federal funding, with local overrides passed in the last seven, of the seven, of the last ten years, notable major projects coming, and tax relief programs that are not being fully utilized, this article presents the opportunity for the voter to show the select board that they are concerned and request additional work to be done to manage the current and future spending decisions, we hope you will sign on to our message, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Amy?
Um, yeah, so, just a month before this group, the Eastham Part-Time Resident Taxpayer Association, um, submitted this article, um, they sent a letter to the select board, subject, Select Board, January sixth, twenty-twenty-five. APERTA would like to offer the select board and the town heartfelt wishes in the new year, we appreciate everything that the town officials do to make Eastham one of the most desirable and successfully run municipalities in the state. This letter wasn't just sent by the leadership, it was signed by over eight hundred members of the APERTA board. The article before you is backlash to the select board and our intention to implement the residential tax exemption this fall. APERTA isn't just looking for a second opinion, they are looking to delay implementation of the RTE, and it says so right in their article as to the purpose. By law, the town is independently audited every year, the results of those audits have contributed to our very strong double A-plus bond rating. Our finance committee pours over the entire budget and all expenditures with a fine-tooth comb at weekly open meetings and before we come to town meeting. Every penny that has been appropriated and spent is done so only after approval at town meeting, and when we do have the large capital expenditures, such as water, the new technical high school, the renovations at this school, we show exactly how much your tax bill is going to go up, each time, and if you just moved here, and you're not sure what's coming, you can look back at previous warrants, it's all on the town website. Taxes have gone up, they have doubled in the last ten years, and I've named some of the few, few of the reasons, but again, everything has been approved by this body at town meeting, um, and just tonight, we approved a over forty-five million dollar budget with no debate, and it passed by over ninety percent of the vote, so I encourage you to vote no on this, we have great oversight in our town by both the finance committee and our finance department, thank you.
Mary or Peter, is anyone from finance wanna make a comment, are you good to just, good, okay?
Hey, greetings, um, my name's Terry Tolanar, three-twenty Ireland Way, I am a part-timer, um, just as an aside, I'm a good Irish Catholic girl from Boston with a large Jewish community, and that's offensive that you're asking us to put those on and, and present ourselves with yellow stickers, so, um... I mean, if, I think you, I think if you get that, you get that, that's, that's kinda crazy. It's not star-shaped, but...
Oh, alright, miss, please, please, please speak to the article.
Okay, so, there's a lot of strong feelings in the room tonight, and rightfully so, I've been coming to Eastham for over forty years, and recently became a part-time resident, and I do care deeply about this town, that's why I'm asking you to hit the pause button on any tax increases and vote yes on Article nine A. Let's bring in an independent party to assess how our town is spending taxpayer dollars, someone who can give us a clear, unbiased view, because let's face it, this warrant that you voted on is pretty complicated. In my experience, what looks like it's a good idea on paper can have consequences down the road, and not all of them can be reversed, and I'll be the first to admit that I may not have every fact exactly right, but I do have some serious concerns that I would hope that you would consider. From what I understand, the proposed wastewater treatment plant is set to be built in a densely populated neighborhood, so why would you do that, why wouldn't you use the eleven acres where Teatime property was? Instead, it seems that the voters were presented with a glossy plan for a brand-new downtown, housing, shops, a walking promenade, and it sounds lovely, but here's the catch, it only works if the wastewater plant is approved, and that means the new downtown could get sewer access before most of the homes in Eastham do, if they ever do at all in our lifetimes, and yet the cost, that trickles down to all of us, the residents, with, will the small local vendors be able to afford off-season rent for a full year, will, in this new vision of the downtown Eastham? Will families living here, year-round, benefit from it? And what if your septic fails in the next ten years, and you're not connected to the wastewater system yet, are you on the hook for forty thousand dollars for a new system and an IA unit on top of higher taxes?
Miss, I don't wanna interrupt you, but please stick to the article.
This is, because it all relates to the tax increase, and accountability, so, you know, it's the same thing with the short-term, the residential tax increase, and the three million dollars expected to, to be sitting in that from the six percent that the short-term rentals have earned, couldn't we use some of that money to help the full-time residents pay their property tax, instead of caping it for the, for the wastewater? It's the job of the elected officials to represent everybody, not just the full-time constituents, your personal beliefs shouldn't outweigh the best interest of the whole community, yet we've heard statements from select person Brian during the January sixth town meeting at the one hour and thirty-two minute mark comparing part-time residents to corporations trying to buy elections, that's offensive, and the rhetoric is very dangerous. This isn't about politics, it's about priorities, and it's about accountability, we all wanna help people in need, but we also have a right to ask questions when tax dollars are being spent without a clear plan, or without long-term equity for all of the residents. So please vote yes on Article nine A, hit the pause button, step back, assess, make sure you're making decisions that truly serve all of Eastham, not just the select few, thank you.
Thank you. I think this young lady was there next, so we'll start with her, and then we'll go to this gentleman.
Hi, Sarah Burl, one fifty Fort Hill Road, I've been a full-time year-round resident in Eastham for sixty-five years, and I think my select board, and the finance committee, and everyone else in this town that works so hard to make this happen year-round, do an amazing job of explaining to me where my tax dollars are going. Well, I, I have to afford my property in Eastham too, but it's my only property, you seem to be having a hard time affording your second home.
Yes, sir.
Jim Fish, sixteen Winterberry Lane, Eastham, Mass. Proud to be in Eastham since nineteen ninety-six, my kids got to grow up here, go to the schools here, I've worked all over the Cape, all over the state doing road construction, I've seen this town progress so much, these people up here have come so far in thirty years, it's amazing, and I've gone to meetings at the library about, you know, Teatime, and there's plenty of availability to find out anything you want, you can stop in the assessor's office, and they'll talk to you, call the building inspector, why is my bound, um, in wetlands now, or something like that, and they explain it to you, you know, so, I really love the town, I understand that some people might have to pay a little more in taxes, my son owns a property next door to me, he lives in Austin, Texas, I called him up, I said, hey, guess what, your taxes are gonna go up, but mine are gonna go down, and that's the way it is, and, and my son said to me, you know what dad, if it can help out people I know that live there to be able to afford to live there, I'm all for it, so, thank you, Christian Fish, and thank you, the town of Eastham.
Hi, Karen Strauss, fifteen Great Pond Road, I am the vice chair and immediate past chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, Chair of the Conservation Commission, Chair of the Teatime Committee, and Member of the Open Space Committee, today I am speaking for myself, I worked for this town as a volunteer since two thousand seventeen, I've helped to develop both of the Eastham, uh, five-year strategic plans, I've submitted CPA applications, and served across committees, so I am in a unique position to speak on the claims made in nine A. This article disregards the extraordinary amount of work, planning, and public engagement that shapes Eastham's decisions, it suggests we have no strategy, that's simply false. The fact is, uh, the back of your warrant includes a summary of our updated strategic plan, it reflects months of public input, department coordination, and committee work, it is a clear, transparent roadmap grounded in what residents and need, and the data to support it, um, from housing and infrastructure to conservation and climate resistance. I'm just gonna mention that there's a public information session on the strategic plan on May twenty-second at the library, two sessions with childcare, uh, the CPA section is also misleading, the Community Preservation Committee does not spend funds just to spend them, it evaluates grant applications and has a five-year plan, funds are reserved so the town can act when the right land, recreation, housing, or historical preservation projects come along, that's called planning. And on the audit request, Eastham already undergoes both state and independent audits every year, our finance director, town administrator, finance committee, and others do exceptional, transparent work, this article doesn't improve trust, it undermines it, I urge you to vote no.
Thank you, Karen.
Hi, my name is Natalia Reddick, three-two-five South Sunken Meadow Road, um, in the past five years that I've lived in Eastham, I've heard nothing but words of admiration about our town from other Outer Cape residents, people are impressed with how much the town is able to achieve and communicate, and how smoothly and respectfully town meetings are run, and how much foresight the town has had in navigating long, big projects and challenges while maintaining a relatively low tax burden, all of this is, um, written in the warrant with the town response, and there are examples, and this year we have the lowest tax burden on the Outer Cape, and I've been really impressed with how the town's been able to balance the current and future needs of all of its residents, including those that benefit from these policies, and the ability to maintain a workforce, a year-round population, young people who can maintain this place as a thriving and happy town. Um, it's clear to me that this town and all of its administrators and hard-working committee and board members are already making the town of Eastham a leader amongst our neighbors, for that reason, this petition article doesn't make any sense to me, it's understandable that part-time residents don't wanna be taxed more, nobody wants to be taxed more, it's valid to voice this feedback, to, to say your thoughts, to share your ideas, at the many open meetings and opportunities that we have throughout the year, that the town holds, so, we've had discussions about all these tax strategies and opportunities to discuss this before now, but a lot of the things I heard voiced weren't even voiced until today, it's not only redundant, it's disrespectful to, as we've said, the many months and years of service and hard work that the town has put in, and to say that they're not doing their job well, and that they deserve an audit, just doesn't seem right to me. Um, one thing that felt rather disingenuous on page fifty was to call the two thousand year-round Eastham households who would benefit from the implementation of a residential tax exemption, a special interest group, that is a disservice, um, these are your town's voters and constituents, so, I think that the major concern I honestly have is that there's no description of how much this would even cost, it's left very open-ended, and the hiring an independent assessor, we have no idea how much it would cost, no idea where that money would come from, so I don't see how we can even vote on something that seems so redundant, would slow so much down, and we don't even know what it would cost, how we would even implement it, so, I kind of have, I feel like, I don't wanna reiterate everything that everyone's already said, but, um, I hope that we all think very deeply on what it means to vote on this article.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Vivian Dufrain, I live at twenty Glacier Hills Road, I'm here to express my frustration at the Eastham Part-Time Resident Taxpayer Association, and their constant push, um, to get a vote and a say in our town, even though you choose to abandon us in the dark months of winter, you leave once the pretty months are over, and you're not here to see what we see, the dark days get longer and longer, the only lights for us is a liquor store. Where were you guys when the pipes burst at the elementary school? Where were you guys to help us count cans? Every day, parents go and count cans for our school to have money for field trips, where are you guys, your kids are at a different school, your kids get an option to swim at a pool, I'm sure that's not forty-five minutes away, like the kids have to do here at Nauset Regional, why are they driving that far away? Why are they driving that far away? I wish you guys would put your effort into something good for this town instead of doing what you're doing today. And if you want to be considered a neighbor, then act like a neighbor. Thank you.
Joan Lockhart, 120 Steel Road. I want to clarify a couple things. This is not just an Eastham part-time resident taxpayers' bill. There are people here in town who agree with them on some of these issues. We're just asking for a second opinion. You know, we've seen that the Select Board has really dismissed our second homeowners. They call them privileged. They characterize them as people who only are here to make money off their rentals. In my neighborhood, my second, my part-time homeowners have owned cottages for generations. They are people who are struggling in some ways just as much as people here. I'm not saying that because they have a second home, they don't, you know, that they should pay. I don't think they should pay more. I mean, they are our neighbors. They get the same treatment from the town as everybody else. In fact, they use less services. But these are people who we're sticking it to them, and I don't understand it. The Board of Assessors advised the Select Board not to, not to implement an RTE. That's what drove me to get involved in this group. They didn't listen to the Board of Assessors. Rich Bienvenu, at the January meeting, listed a whole bunch of ways that we could help people in need, people, means-tested ways, to help them with tax relief. He set up a tax relief fund. We've talked about, I think the Select Board suggested that we limit the CPA funding for some residents if they're in financial need. There are ways to help people in this town, and believe me, I help them every day. I run the Eastham Food Pantry. I volunteer at the Senior Center. I see people who look for tax help. I see people who look for help with their utilities. But I think, you know, it's, it's not a bad thing to get a second opinion. When I was a manager, I always hired people that were smarter than me, because I always thought that makes me look good, and maybe I could learn something from them. So we're just asking the town to get an independent opinion on some of the decisions that have been made, and in the fairness to all of our taxpayers. Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to go to this gentleman first, then to you. Okay?
Thank you. Jim Bachman, 300 Sammaset Road. I think one thing we could all agree on is we're grateful not to live in wealth, Lee. And I call the question.
Okay. So, there were a few people standing at the mic over here before the question was called. So, I'm going to ask you, a couple of you, to go 30 seconds or less, make your point. So we'll go you, you, so with two and a half minutes, we'll be ready. So.
My name is, excuse me, Mark Kennard, 5 Lee Court. I am a part-time resident taxpayer. I was struck by the, I think, Abie, you said it, we need help, I believe, talking about warrant number five. And this is the kind of help that a resident and non-resident taxpayers are offering, a non-binding assistance to you and the Finance Committee to really look at the next three years. We're in a very unpredictable federal and state governmental time, and we're only asking help. So that's what really this is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
James Doll, 130 Salt Winds Drive. I also live in East Williston, New York, where I served for 16 years as a village trustee, much like the Select Board here. My village treasurer had retired from the same position for the County of Nassau, where he ran a $4 billion budget, million and a half residents, and he was responsible completely for bonding. When it came time for us to do bonding in East Williston, he suggested to us, get a second opinion, hire, hire a consultant. And that's what we did. It never hurts to get a second opinion or an expert one. Auditors look for problems, but consistent, but consultants will give you suggestions that maybe you can do things different, or maybe they'll just confirm that what you want to do was the right way. But it's certainly not insulting to you, and I certainly hope that you will consider us, despite what some people say, as not just interlopers, but actually your constituents, your neighbors, your friends. We do as much as anyone else, and I resent anyone saying otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Well said. Go ahead.
I'm Delilah Beebe, 750 Schoolhouse Road. I'm the daughter of two town employees, and I get to see 365 days a year how they agonize over every single decision that they make that affects the community, which is most of them. And they spend an immense amount of their time and energy and life force trying to make sure that everybody has what they need. And this article suggests, you know, distrust in the town government and the idea that it's us versus them, but the reality is that every member of the Select Board, every member of the town government, everyone working at Town Hall is part of the community and wants what's best for them and their neighbors. And the more time we spend feeling divided and separate from each other, as is happening with the, with the non-resident taxpayers, the less we're able to get done and the less sense of community we have. I'm 20 years old, and I find that building a life for myself here is really hard, because we barely have a sense of community when we all feel so divided and when we're all fighting over something like taxes, when people are struggling to even, you know, afford to stay in their homes. And that's, that's a gap that we all need to try to bridge together. We owe it to each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my gosh. Do I have to tell my age, too? My name is Linda Finkrell. I live at 120 Thumpertown Beach Road, and I'm the chairperson of the Eastham Tax Committee. And what I want to say is that I don't think most people here know how hard it is for people here to pay their taxes, elderly people who have inherited a big house they can't afford, and they can't move because there's not anything available at a decent price for them. But the reason I'm speaking today is to thank everybody in this room who has been so outrageously generous. We put a little thing in your tax bill, and we have really received such generous donations from all of you from the Eastham community. So thank you. Everyone is trying to help people pay their taxes, and we're one of the committees that does that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Moderator. My name's Tom McMur. I'm a part-time resident, live at 20 Captain Penman Way in Northeastham. My full-time residence is in Weymouth, Mass. And I am also the president of the Eastham Part-Time Residents Taxpayers Association. Just to start off, I've been coming to Eastham since 1972 with my family, my kids, and now my grandkids. I'm a vested, as well as many of the other participants in my organization, in the APERTA organization, a vested participant in this community. We are here 12 months of the year. We also serve on, our members serve on the Finance Committee. Our members serve on the Capital Projects Committee. Our members serve on looking for committee members to sit on other committees. So we're invested long-term on those committees and other committees throughout the town. So when people say that we're only here a few months of the year and we don't care about this community, that's just inappropriate and wrong, to be honest with you. We care about this community, and we care about helping people that are struggling to pay their bills. Chairperson Ekman brought up a letter that I wrote and signed, and she talks about how everything comes to town meeting for a vote. What you didn't hear, though, was that one letter was about the RTE, and that is the one thing the Select Board voted on their own. It did not come to town meeting. Okay? This article that we put up is not just about the part-timers. In order to get this on the warrant article, we had to talk with, I'm sorry, we had to get involvement by full-time residents in order to get their signatures to get it on the warrant article. Furthermore, additional separate full-time members also helped us with the messaging for the article. So it's not just about the RT or the part-timers. This is a group of full-timers and part-timers. Without repeating what's been said before, I just wanted to make two last points. My original comment said-
Please do. Very, very quickly, please.
Okay. I see two positive results from this non-binding petition. The request for a third-party independent assessment helps to validate the Select Board's actions, and its taxpayers have increased confidence in their decision-making in these difficult times. Or the independent assessment identifies areas for improvement that the Select Board can take to change course accordingly and improve the outlook of the overall community.
Relax, please.
Either way, the Select Board will have demonstrated its willingness to listen to the concerns of the town's taxpayers, and the taxpayers will have increased confidence in its town government during these challenging times.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. I don't see that we have anybody else standing at the mic, but we did have the question to be called, so we do need to vote on that. And that requires a two-thirds majority. So prepare to vote. Yeah. So the two-thirds majority vote is required to stop discussion on the article in front of you. Then, once that passes, I'm assuming it'll pass, then we'll vote on the article itself. So, prepare to vote. We need a two-thirds majority to, to stop discussion on the called question. So the, it has passed to call the question. 335 in favor of calling the question, 24 voting against calling the question. So now we can move to the Article 9A. We have 30 seconds to vote.
A yes vote is in favor of 9A, and no vote is opposed.
Correct. So Article 9A has not passed. There are 54 voting in favor of the article, 304 are voting opposed. So it does not pass. So a couple housecleaning items before we finish. I've been asked to remind you, there is no recycling tubs here, so if everybody would take your warrant and recycle them with you, we'd appreciate that. So the last moment of business is I wanted to thank you all for coming and your participation. Tried to keep it on the rails, and I think for the most part, we did all right. So I appreciate everybody, everybody, give yourself a hand. And so, the last order of business is all in favor of ending town meeting 2025 and say aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.